This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
School District Board of Education Business Meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, we allow for public participation to receive feedback or get questions from members of the community. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to what is always one of our favorite parts of every public meeting, and that's the Brighton Believers Award. Dr. McGowan.
So for the first time in the history of the Brighton Believers Award, I'd like to call up the OG to come up here, please. I'm trying to think of the spot where the camera can get you best. So first of all, the introduction to the awards, the Brighton Believers Awards, as you know, and hopefully our community knows, of course, at this point, too, are all about people being recognized in our community for demonstrating the Brighton beliefs, character traits, integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, community members. The nomination form is available at bcst.org. These are very special people doing very special things in our community, and tonight is absolutely no exception to that. James Smith, a cleaner at Brighton High School, had 25 separate nominations, also never happened before, come in for him, which is something, again, is unprecedented. And that on its own demonstrates the impact that Mr. Smith, also known to the students as Mr. OG, has on students, on staff, at the high school, and frankly, on all of us. We were talking about you just a little while ago, and it was all good, I promise, my friend, but it was about how you can't help but have your bucket filled when you interact with you, and I say that, you know well, my family, who interacts with you quite a bit at events, and how you make us feel, and you do that for everybody all the time. Here are some of the highlights from the nominations. Teacher Andrew Conroy wrote, "He consistently encourages students to be respectful of their peers and to take pride in their school community, instilling values that extend far beyond his custodial responsibilities. He is the one trusted adult for many kids that makes the difference, that makes everybody in this school community as an educator feel better about the work that they're doing." Gigi Misalti wrote, "Mr. Smith consistently promotes positivity and responsibility throughout the school by fostering close relationships with students and helping to create an environment where students are motivated to take care of the school and each other." Liam Pfeffer wrote that he supports students by attending games, showing his support for our school, and taking time out of his day to show his appreciation for the students he cares so much for. And take, and, I'm sorry, Thomas DiAngelo wrote, "Mr. OG deserves the nomination because of the positive connection he makes with students, the important lessons he teaches students, and because of his positive attitude every day." This is kids seeing you do this every day and taking the time to write it down. Taj Foster wrote, "He holds students to a level of responsibility that allows them to grow as social and productive students at a high school, which shows how much further he goes to be more than just a custodial staff member." Luke Perillo wrote, "Mr. Smith teaches students valuable life lessons throughout our days with his wisdom and personable spirit." That doesn't even come close to describing that spirit, but it's a wonderful way for this young person to express it. Nathan Ruckler wrote, "When I am older, I want to have the same enthusiasm as Mr. Smith does every single day. His unwavering spirit helps to motivate me and my fellow classmates each and every day at school." Ben Remmel wrote, "His positive influence throughout the school has touched almost every student and staff member." Ella Simpson wrote, "He keeps our school clean and is, in my opinion, a true underrated hero." Hopefully rated right tonight. Isaac Wing wrote, "He has interacted positively with everyone he has met and created a positive, lasting impact on students by connecting with them on a personal level, going above and beyond." I only began, but just scratched the surface, in describing the impact that you've had on our school environment, on all of us in this room personally, and can't tell you how much we appreciate it. We are forever indebted to you and recognize you tonight as a Brighton believer. Can you take a picture because Dan's not here? And let's see, John and Rob, if you guys could come on up, and Lou, if you could come on up, too? Thanks, Tom. And actually, Mark, yeah, do you mind? That'd be great, Danielle. Never mind Mark, sorry, calling you into duty already. Tom, hop in the picture. Good, thanks. Pick the easy one here. Yeah.
I would love to thank everybody in this room, and I will continue doing my job because that is my job. I put 35 years with the Rochester City School District, working with special-ed kids, so this is part of my family. When I come here, I put on a jock hat, is to teach. When I go in this cafeteria every day, they know a responsibility is going to come from me, is to do your job. Thank you for giving me this reward.
Okay. You're all to my left, so as we're doing approvals, someone's got to raise their hand so I can see who it is. We have all received the agenda that we're working from tonight and need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Susan? Seconded by Eleanor? All those in favor? Approval of minutes from our last meeting, November 28th. Questions, edits, changes to those minutes as you review them. Motion to approve. Moved by Karen? Seconded by Carrie Lynn? All those in favor? Very excited that we're going to get an update from Deanna Spagnola in regards to the Student Support Services Program, so looking forward to that tonight. Deanna? Isn't that what I got next?
With all the technology and I still had to bring my paper today, just in case, so thank you. Excited to be able to be here to share some highlights and updates about this Office of Student Services. I feel it's priority important to highlight all of the areas that my office supports, including the areas that are listed across the top. Often people say, "Well, what is the Office of Student Services?" And so I just like to make sure that I list those items and those areas that we support every day, every way, for every child. A big portion that I'm very proud of, and I owe a great deal of thanks to the leadership from Caitlin Feeney, my Assistant Director, who is really helping to lead our work to support the blueprint. And mental health, if you open up the blueprint when you go online, mental health is the first page of our blueprint. And here is our overall goal for the year. And our continuing work and strategies for how we are supporting each of the goals and the work that I'm going to highlight, that I've also been able to talk during our blueprint overview throughout the year, so I'll only summarize some of those pieces today. Caitlin has been working with our building leadership, our building teams, and our mental health departments, and now our work is even expanding with our partnership with URMC as we look at our supporting area of mental health in terms of the training. So a common theme throughout the presentation tonight really is about how we're maximizing our resources, how we're increasing our area of development, and strengthening our circle of support for our students, including some of the professional development that's happening. Most recently, Dr. Melissa Heatley was presenting at the middle school on trauma-informed practices in January. She'll be joining us as a leadership team, and she will also be even presenting to our teaching assistants. So just some examples of some other professional development that we're providing, including also upcoming in February to the entire Brighton High School staff, the QPR question, persuade, respond, in terms of identifying indicators of suicide, or students at risk of suicide. Our work around MTSS. And in a few seconds, I'm going to talk about our work regarding school avoidance, or I like to call our school re-engagement plans in particular. And I'm going to mention Caitlin once again because she's in the process right now of helping our buildings in our district take a look at the tools that we're going to use to conduct in the spring another social-emotional learning survey, how we're going to do that, what tools we'll use for that, and digging into the data for that as well. Our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support teams, our BST teams, Brighton Support Teams in our buildings, have really been digging in very carefully around school avoidance, school re-engagement plans, helping to support our students who are struggling, maybe from COVID, maybe related to mental health needs, struggling coming to school. This is a very individualized, it is not a one-size-fits-all plan, and really using the guidance of our partnership with URMC as well. The ladder comes up as a theme a lot. You're going to move along very slowly, very gradually, along the steps and tiers of the ladder, engaging back into school. That could mean time in the tutoring center, that could mean time in a class. Here's an example of a sample re-engagement plan, just a simple one example, and again, I want to emphasize, it is not a one-size-fits-all. We are looking at different aspects of this, what works for students, to re-engage them in school. Another example is we're also going to be bringing in some of URMC team we just talked tonight as our monthly nurses meeting to talk about trauma-informed practices and school and re-engagement plans with our nurses as well, so that will be really exciting. Another example of great professional development. We are constantly looking at our continuum of services. January, I will be meeting with individual teams, individual teachers across buildings to look at what are projected needs of programming for our students, what are things that we need to anticipate in terms of budget implications, but also at the end of it, what do students need and what are the programs that we need to put in place for our students? This is an example of the continuum that we have in place, but it is always, it's a fluid needs assessment that we look at. Where do we need to bring supports to our students? Again, I want to use that phrase, circle of support, for all of our students as well. I'm looking forward to the conversations that I'll be having with individual teachers in January and into February as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up our out-of-district placements, as those are a critical, important way that we support many of our students if it's not in one of our four buildings. Our constant communication with those teams, looking at plans and how we provide what is needed for students who may have unique needs that we are not able to support within our buildings as well. We also have a number of students that we support in our parentally placed programs. I like to highlight this. In particular, the last few years, as I've mentioned, last year we've seen an increase in the number of referrals from the parentally placed, and I'm really excited that beginning January and February, Caitlin and I are going to be working with some of these schools around multi-tiered systems of support to help take a look at the number of referrals, looking in particular at Tier Two and Tier Three interventions before we get to the special education table. Here's another example of some maximizing resources. I was really excited today as our nursing team was joined by Kate Valdez, our new nurse coordinator. You may remember her during our time of COVID, our COVID nurse, we called her. She now is our nurse coordinator. We're really excited to have her on board, working part-time each week, helping to develop practice, process, procedure, helping to develop our team. And let's face it, my background is in special education. While we oversee the nursing department, I now have a right-hand man in terms of knowledge base for nursing, boots-on-the-ground practice to help support our nursing team, so we're very grateful to have her on board. Last year, when I presented our overview, I talked about the St. John Fisher University Program, our transition programming there. We've added some really great features we're excited about. We're partnering with BOSI's to work with the transition specialists so we can better target our goals, the experiences, the interests and needs of our students. We've also embedded into the program a psychologist, Heather Gabriel, and Lindsay German, one of our speech and language providers, is coming to support with some communication needs, to support social communication, working in the community. So we're really excited about those features in those programs. I'm going to be highlighting some pieces around our 1214 programming. Due to increased enrollment and an increase of students, we actually added a third 1214 program to Council Rock very late in the summer, but where we, they were able to turn very quickly, pivot, to support and put resources, whether that's OT, PT, speech services, change schedules, to support very unique, individualized needs of that very, very, very important program. Students coming from not only across the county, across our country, and actually across the globe as well, coming for the special education supports that we provide. So we're very proud of that, and we're also proud of the way we're able to support those students' needs. Some highlights here within our 1214 program of how we are working, these are some highlights from Council Rock, of how we're able to build community, adding in that other program, how we're learning in the community. Here we have some examples of some students at the high school delivering coffee, our coffee cart that delivers every day. It's a wonderful and amazing experience. Sometimes you get to do the job that you want to do, it's your favorite. Sometimes you have to do a job because it's your job and you're not interested in it. And then how do you work on your communication when you're doing part of the job that's maybe not so preferred? Here's another example, to the right is our St. John Fisher University Transition Program. They are working together also with West Aranacoye and Webster students in this snapshot. Prior to this, they were on a community-based outing. They had prepared cost reports, menus, and recipes, and here they are preparing what they planned for together as a team. And maybe Mrs. Pacino, some familiar faces in this picture here as well, but here's an example from our high school, where we're also serving our community, whether we are working together at the food bank, I love that picture. The 1214 program is also looking at how they can use some of their own tips to give back to the community. They are really invested in how they can continue to support other families in need, and that was a student-generated request, so we're taking a look at how we can navigate that process for them, and we're very appreciative of their wonderful, wonderful ideas. We have internship opportunities, not only at the food bank, but the Friendly Home and at the YMCA as well, where we're continuing to look at that community connection, community conversation, independence, and really strengthening goals in the interests of our students as well. I could go on for quite some time, but these are just some highlights, and I promised that I would keep it brief. Any questions?
Just first a comment. I appreciate that the team is open to establishing these partnerships, like with URMC, because I think years ago, maybe we would have tried to take everything in-house and sort of figure it out, so I love the partnerships you're doing with other schools, as well as like experts like URMC. I think that makes us better and allows us to serve the kids better, so I appreciate that. Second thing is, is I'm going to briefly apologize because I was working off an old agenda, and so I was trying to get squared around with Kevin, so I had to look away a few times, and I apologize for that, but when I don't pull up the right agenda, that's on me, so I apologize.
No worries.
Great job. Any comments from anybody else?
Thank you.
Appreciate the work. I'm getting coaching, one second, please. I did do that a little bit out of order. As I said, I was working off an older agenda, so it was my fault, I apologize. But we do have a very exciting couple of moments to hit with, for two staff that happened to be in attendance. We're going to approve two tenure appointments, and then we're going to present those tenure certificates to the two individuals. I should have made her stay up there, right? If that's what...
That would have been ideal. And then she was going to sing a song, there's a whole bunch of things, and it's sort of like everybody's Got Talent competition.
So we just did a great job, Deanna, on the Student Services, Student Support Services update. Now we're going to do, for the Board Approval of Administrator, tenure recommendation for Deanna Spagnola, who we just heard from. Motion to approve. Moved by Karen? Seconded by Eleanor? All those in favor? Aye. Also want to do approval of teacher tenure recommendation for Donald Benedict. Motion to approve. Moved by Esther? Seconded by Sue? All those in favor? Aye.
So we'll do the presentations, and I would ask DT and Deanna to come to the podium for Christine and Larry to present you with your certificate, and you can make your way up there. The first person on the agenda is Deanna, so if you can head back up. Christine and Larry will meet you there. Deanna, don't go anywhere yet, though, because now you have to endure hearing all the wonderful things about yourself, but you're joined also tonight by your family who's here, and I would like to also give them a round of applause and thank them for all their support. So I have the pleasure of recommending you to the Board for this tenure appointment, and what I wrote to them was that it was with great enthusiasm and excitement that I offered my wholehearted recommendation for this tenure appointment as Director of Student Services. And I've had the privilege of working closely with Deanna in this current role and when she was an Assistant Principal at Front Row. I've witnessed firsthand her outstanding dedication and valuable contributions to the students, staff, and greater Brighton school community. Deanna possesses an exceptional commitment to meeting the diverse needs of each student under her care, and as we heard in that presentation, they are diverse, they are deep, they are varied, and they are all exceptionally important. Her unwavering empathy towards all individuals, combined with her deep-rooted commitment to this district, have consistently translated into initiatives that prioritize the holistic well-being and academic success of each and every child. I believe one of Deanna's most admirable qualities is her exceptional ethic of care. Not a surprise to any of you that know Deanna at all. She is relentless in making sure, relentless in making sure that each child and their family is supported. Deanna confronts apathy and embraces uncomfortable moments to push adults to find better answers for students. She possesses an exceptional moral compass, consistently making decisions that reflect her deep-seated commitment to ethical practices and the betterment of our students' lives. She also demonstrates incredible collegiality, fostering an environment of collaboration, of support among staff, parents, and students alike. Her kindness and unwavering dedication to doing what is right for the right reasons has served as a guiding light for all of us. Deanna's dedication to upholding the values and mission of the district is commendable. Her tireless efforts that every decision made align with the best interests of our students and community members underscore her passion for education and her role within the district. There is simply no question that Deanna's leadership will continue to enrich the lives of our students and further elevate our own standards for excellence. She has earned this exceptional commitment, thanks to her exceptional work, and our confidence that she will continue to make a remarkable difference for our students. Again, congratulations. If I could ask DT Benedict to come up now, please? Donald, otherwise known to us as DT Benedict, was recommended by Mr. Tappin for this tenure appointment. He writes that DT is an educator who goes above and beyond daily to ensure the success of his students while building deep and meaningful relationships with each of them as well. Mr. Benedict has his bachelor's degree in elementary education from Mercyhurst College and his master's degree in special education, also from Mercyhurst. Before landing here at Council Rock, he was working as a classroom teacher, long-term sub at Front Row, and then previously taught in the Rochester City School District. DT commits his full self to anything he does, and this certainly includes his classroom. He works hard to create a positive, supportive, and challenging environment for all of his students. His energy is infectious, and it is not uncommon to walk into his room and find him playing his guitar or sharing his love of other music with his students. No matter what is happening in Room 52, the constant is the love and adoration that DT students have for him. He respects each of his students individually and helps them collaborate with each other to create a team atmosphere where together they all achieve and support one another. In addition to his students, Mr. Benedict connects with their families. He communicates frequently and elicits their support in the team mentality of working collaboratively to ensure success for their children. Within our school culture, DT has taken on a role as a strong leader. He connects with his colleagues both socially and academically. He has become an integral part of the first-grade team. His work in blazing the trail for our newest DLA curriculum has been impressive. Like all other parts of his life, he has taken it head-on with an incredibly positive attitude and with a passion that is unparalleled. His positive attitude is something that Mr. Tappin so appreciates, he is often a face he looks to during a meeting to find a reassuring smile and head nod, showing his unending support for the work that we do with kids. Mr. Benedict completes his probationary period, demonstrating an excellence in teaching and leadership. His positivity, diligence, commitment, love for the profession, and for his students are all a part of this excellence. He is most deserving of a tenure appointment in the Brighton Central School District, and he wholeheartedly endorses the recommendation. First of all, because I didn't acknowledge him, he's also here with his family tonight. Can we give them a round of applause? Thank you for giving of him at times to work with our children and for all the sacrifices that means in our school community. And DT, congratulations, we couldn't be more happy for you. And thank you for letting us go out of order. Mr. Davis takes the fall, but that is not necessary. It's what he's been given by me, so thank you. And great job, Deanna. Glad you got to present in front of your family. I know you're probably very excited about that opportunity, so...
Next up, we have Brighton High School Facilities Plan Update with Lou and his team.
So in just a moment, I'll call up Brian Solinsky from SEI Design, but I wanted to make a few introductory remarks. On behalf of our owner, architect, construction management team, we are excited to be recommending for the Board's consideration Phase Two of the 2023-24 Capital Improvement Project. We, as a team, have spent months prioritizing defining scope, working with our financial consultants to put a package that we're really excited about. I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize our team. I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize our team, representing the district and our leadership team. Certainly, Board President Mr. Davis is a key member of that. We have John Novelli and Robert Luce, our partners at SEI Design, Brian Slinski and David Hallmark, and Campus Construction, Gary Huffman and Nick Appolito. I can't thank them enough for their efforts and the work that they've done to present, again, a project that we're really excited about, that I think is going to do great things for our community and for our broader school community. Some key highlights of the project that I wanted to note just before inviting Brian up. Key scope items. This is going to include improvements to our athletic fields. It achieves full accessibility to the front of BHS and access to the fourth floor and renovation of the fourth floor, which has not been significantly renovated since 1939, Dr. Huff. So we will be finally updating that space. We'll be reengineering the BHS parking lot to improve safety and allow for future traffic safety improvements. It will improve building safety at TCMS entrance by moving the main office to the first floor and allowing creation of a mental health suite. We'll be improving HVAC systems at BHS and French Road, achieving energy efficiencies. We'll be redesigning the bus loop at French Road to improve safety and scheduling issues. And we'll be improving workplace safety and building operational continuity in the kitchen at French Road Elementary School. So with that, I'd like to invite Brian Slinski up to further define the scope of this project, and then we'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Well, he finished, so I don't know what I have to do. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm happy to present the project. We've developed the project, working through the long-range plan and identifying a bunch of items, as Lou said, infrastructure, accessibility, and safety, kind of some of the caveats that were used to define these. And they will affect French Road, 12 Corners, and the high school, along with the campus site, as I'll kind of go through. Please ask questions as I go. French Road, I actually went to school here when it was open wall. What you're seeing is the highlight in the hallways here, and really what that means is we have what are called heat pump systems. Those units are sitting up on the ceilings, and they're aging out. And so as part of the project, we've allocated a portion of funds to handle as many as we can with that portion of funds and continuing to do the updates as we are currently doing a portion of the current project. As I zoom in a little here, on the backside of the building, this is right behind the cafeterium, you'll see kind of a red box. This is a piece of an addition. What this really is, is there's a freezer, a commodity-type freezer that needs to be added. And then if we shift the freezer and cooler inside the kitchen, it's allowing for the kitchen to function a lot better and then relieve some space inside that, and we'll do some renovations to make this function better. So it kind of was a two-fold. We talked about one item, and then looking at the other item and aligning all these together, it works out really, really well. Additional to that, you see a little highlight on the mechanical room. There's some work inside the mechanical space, detailed systems, which I could go through, but I don't know if anybody wants to talk pumps and systems. Okay, outside, we're looking at the bus loop. I think those of you that have been there have managed or worked on staging buses to get in and out of here. It's very difficult. So how do we start to look at that? And we've looked at multiple plans, and this isn't fully vetted final, but it's a very good take of this. I'm going to overlay this. So if you look at the way the buses come in now, they actually stage half elsewhere. Looking at it in this manner, we make a realignment of the front loop and do what we call the Chevron parking for the buses, and then do a little bit modification to the parent drop-off portion of that to make those fit. This gets everybody in, all the buses in line, and it really is a huge update to safety in the way things are being managed now. 12 Corners, again, on the security side, enhancing a secured entry and then integrating some office spaces in this front portion. This is a difficult task. We've been struggling with the design, and we're still working through all the details because you have exiting out of this gym piece, and that kind of messes up how we come in and out of the entry. So we'll be working diligently through this solution, but we've allocated the funds to handle that. Over at the high school, now this gets fun, because I'm going to show you this slide, and then I'm going to show you a funky slide that I put together that I hope shares the elevator piece. But the boiler room, there's some upgrades that need to be done there. As we know, we've got to keep the heat running at all times, and so we have to do some infrastructure work here. But in the front, and I'm going to blow this up here, is adding that elevator. As Mr. Limo mentioned, accessing the fourth floor has not been available. And so if you're not aware, as students come through the program, actually, they're shifting rooms to get the rooms down for their programmatic needs if somebody had an accessibility issue has to attend that class. So by doing this renovation of the rooms up top and adding the elevator, and so I kind of stacked all the floors. On the ground floor and the bottom, we're going to get you an entrance, and we're going to cut into a few of the areas. So we make modifications, and we worked through this with your principal. And modifying those rooms, we can squeeze an elevator right in. And where does that elevator come up? If you look at the first floor, it will actually be, as you now walk in, just to the right, when you come up the stairs to the right-hand side, there's a display area. The elevator will come up through there. We're trying to make that, and we're actually working with State Historic Preservation so that we don't modify the look too much. We're going to have to do a little bit. And we'll move some of those cases and integrate that into the lobby, which is good for security. And then we move up the next floor. We're impacting a small portion of one of the student rooms there you'll see on the second floor. We're taking just a sliver enough to get the elevator in. And then on the fourth floor, we actually cut a room in half to get that in. So we kind of lose half a room, but in part of our long-range planning that we're working with Mr. Hall here, we're working through how we're modifying and shifting all of the rooms to accommodate these solutions. That will allow you a bunch of things. One, full renovation of that upstairs and utilization. And two, there's actually some side rooms that flank. So the future in the long-range plan that's been talked about is we'll be able to move stuff up and down and access a little bit more of the storage, which helps relieve other areas. So that's a good. Any questions to that one? Because I know that one's a slice through your building. It's not easy. Okay? And then this is just showing those classrooms on the upper level that will all get renovated. You should go visit if you haven't. They're interesting. Okay. Site work. In regards to the site work, this is starting to look at baseball softball in the back area. I think as we know, getting started in the spring around here and our climate, yourselves and many of the schools around the area are looking to modify into turf fields, baseball softball. This is the way you exist today. This is kind of overlaying that plan. So now some good things have happened. You've done some acquisition of property, and that's fostered a little bit of the ability to work on this design in this fashion. Again, we're halfway there, so don't think of these as done. We'll be working with your new athletic director here, going through some of the details of this. But it allows us to get some more parking. It allows us to start looking at safety of that parking lot and, you know, drop-offs and all the things going on in the front. And then integrates both a baseball and a softball field. And you see in this design, the baseball also is the ability to overlay a soccer field, and so you'll be able to get double utilization of that area. We will be working with some modifications and around maintenance as well with this. But one of the very exciting, in my mind, and this has been a little bit of a goal here, is to align the exit of the parking lot to the street across Newton Across. And so you've already invested in a study with a traffic engineer. That engineer has come back with a few, what we call warrants, and those warrants are things that the Department of Transportation goes through to depict if we can add signal lights or modifications to the road. If you are not aware, which I'm sure you are, you are at a crazy intersection, and you actually hit three jurisdictions. This road is a county road. We have already met with the County Department of Transportation. We have began that discussion, and I say began. And this is not, the signals themselves or the answer to this is not all in the project. But in planning, what is in the project is to align those two roads and then work through with Department of Transportation. And this is where, if you see the red circle, it would realign. The second piece of the puzzle, and one of the things that got triggered in the first study, was that in the yellow box there, we have the crossing area, there are many, well, not many, there's a couple of instances where cars are still going through that. And so we're looking at what we call a HAWK system or a modification and working with DOT. And DOT was really great in sharing some of that information and talking to us about different modifications that if we don't meet the warrants and get a full signal light, they might be able to work with us and do a different type of system that will make this safer, slow, traffic down, calm it. And there's even some study as to changing some of the turning lanes and modifications to the main road. Now, that's a year-long process. So I want you to know, and Lou was harping on me, that to make sure that we express we're working on that portion is not part of this project, but tied into what we're doing now to foster that down the road. Any questions to that? Because that's a whole bunch of stuff.
No, I'd note that when the time comes, we will be able to present this whole plan to the community. They'll be able to come and see some of those things when we get there. We've talked about that in the past. But the community, particularly those folks who live on Wynton Road, who live through that traffic snarl in the morning and then in the early afternoon, will have a chance to come and see what we're proposing and have a chance to provide feedback and things like that. You guys have been great about saying we'll get that all out there on some cardboard and put it out.
Absolutely. And that is a great tie right into a potential schedule. And I call this potential because none of this happens until the board acts tonight. Here we are, December 12th. If you decide to go forward and you vote to do so, we will begin distributing that data to residents and start getting the word out there. There will be some public information meetings that will happen in between the January, or December-January timeframe. And then the target here is February 7th. For those that are new to this, you have to keep 45 days between the moment you guys make a referendum and that vote, so that meets the requirement for the law and gives us time to really get the word out, so.
We can, Kevin just reminded me that we're setting that date for January 31st, so that third bullet up there will be January 31st.
Okay, removed. Okay, January 31st. This is just kind of a summary of the budget. Each of the buckets and how much is roughly per school. Working with campus here, and we run through the numbers and put that together. There are incidental costs to that, design fees in all the agencies, the DOT, and all those requirements that we're going through. And that's what I have for the presentation.
Before we have any questions, I just wanted to touch on, of course, I got to touch on the finances of it. I can't ask the board to approve anything without really understanding the finances of it. So it's a $21.85 million project. It's, will not have an impact on local taxpayers, meaning it is a reinvestment, as we've been talking about for the last couple of years. The current portion of the levy that's dedicated to capital will remain. So it's a reinvestment, no new taxes for capital purposes.
Can I ask you a question about that? So you mean, because everybody from me down at this table, and actually a couple of people down there, pay taxes to the community, so my taxes won't go up at all for all that work?
So the portion of your tax bill right now that's dedicated to capital.
Won't go up.
Will stay the same.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear. Thank you.
So some other key financial talking points for this project are, we are maximizing the state aid that's available. So Brighton is aided at about 78%. So we're maximizing our cost allowances within the interior work and the site work. The site work, based on what was presented by our design team, exceeds the maximum cost allowance, so we need to use some capital reserve to ensure that we're not increasing taxes on the capital levy. We are fully reinvesting the sale, the proceeds from the sale of the Brookside property. So approximately $3.3 million we netted from that sale is going directly into this project, and it's dedicated to that site work. So the turf fields, the realignment of the parking lot, it's a full reinvestment of that, as we said, you know, during the sale process. It does require, though, to ensure and to maintain that promise to the community that we won't be levying new taxes for this project, it does require additional capital reserve of $1.85 million. So we are using that. We will have a balance of 5.2 at the end of the project. So once we commit this piece of it, we'll still have ample reserves for future investment as we consider work down the road. So of this project, $4.85 million will be from capital reserves. The rest will be borrowing. So we worked with our financial consultants, so any new debt that we'll be taking on, again, is a complete match to what's coming off of our debt service schedule. That's how we're able to ensure that no new taxes. Should something go wrong, then we're using our financial position to honor that commitment. And that has been a very strong, firm commitment by the Board of Education to make sure that this capital project is tax-neutral. Those are the key financing points. Again, so on the capital resolution, there'll be a bonding portion of it, and then there'll be the capital reserve portion of it that the board's considering, and the community will be essentially authorizing both to issue new debt and to withdraw from the capital reserve fund. Any questions on the financing?
Eleanor, did you have a question?
I had a question, but not on the financing. It was about the elevator. Is that going to increase accessibility to the school at all for ADA, other than sort of the one entrance that we have that's at the far end of the school? I'm just curious.
That's the intent.
What?
That's the intent.
Okay, so the...
So the front of the building.
We'll have, well, we'll have access through ramps and other things.
Please.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we're working with Preservation to look at accessing, instead of coming up the stairs, we have the ability to go down and come through one of the entrances below. That won't affect the facade. It kind of keeps us away from historic preservation issues and makes them happy. So yes, that still means somebody will be, have to be buzzed in at that location to come up. That's why we come into security, which is nice, because they have to come to security first, and then security can check them.
No, that's great. Also, having been a high school student, having had to walk up the stairs to the fourth floor in my crutches back in 1991, I'm very happy there's an elevator to the fourth floor now.
I was also just mentioning CEQA. You, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, you're going to take action on that first. You have to do that first before you do a referendum, but you had a whole thing in your packet there. We have done this as a full environmental assessment form, but are acting it as what we call an unlisted, uncoordinated. What that meant is that we've notified all your agencies that have an impact to the area. It's been put out in the world, in the ether. We've gotten comments only to say, just keep us in tune to what's going on. Nothing other than that has come through, to my knowledge. I don't think we've received anything else. The State Education Department actually just snuck in yesterday that, yep, we're good as well. So you've met all of that requirement, and you'll see the Phase One piece that we identified, the Phase Two, which says there's really no impacts that are anything excessive in this nature, and then the Three is just your sign.
The other thing I'd note, and we've talked about this as a team previously, and this will seem, I don't know if it's counterintuitive or not, but we will, in a few parts, and Brian had these on our diagrams, taking up real grass and putting down fake grass, which seems counterintuitive for someone like me who's an environmentalist, who considers myself an environmentalist. Our problem is, our challenge is availability of fields in the spring and fall, if you have a wet fall or a wet spring, because once a field goes muddy, you can almost never get it back. So some of those things might seem counterintuitive, but it will actually allow our students to be out on the fields more. So I just note that, because I think it's important to say that out loud for folks.
Yes, sir. Good point.
Thank you all very much. Next up, we've got reports. First, the first up is the financial reports. Those have to go for approval. You've all had a chance to review those. Are there any questions with regards to the financial reports you received? Motion to approve. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Our student representative. I had to look down the table because I can't see side by side.
So for clubs, the Galaxy Literature Magazine is currently holding an open-mic night in the Lower Library. Friend of mine is hosting a food drive next week, and the Brighton Chess Club is planning on holding a chess tournament the morning of the 16th of December. In addition, Drama Club is hosting karaoke night this Friday after school, and Climate Club and Fashion Club are co-hosting a holiday flea market the week before break. As for sports, Seniors Anthea Hayslip, Lucy Liederman, and Maeve Diefendorf had their girls' cross signing day at the end of November, and Seniors Tom Welker, Will P. Corr, and Kieran Hughes received the National Football Foundation Scholar-Athlete Award. As for Executive Council, we just hosted our second annual Battle of the Bruins. And in other news, there is an orchestra concert tomorrow night, and Mountain Bound signups have begun. Link Crew is also handing out pieces of string called "Forgive Me Knots" to appreciate people who have helped us in our lives. And, I believe, last week, Dr. Christine Coward from the U of R was invited to the high school to discuss her journey as the only black female eye surgeon in Rochester. to the high school to discuss her journey as the only black female eye surgeon in Rochester.
Thank you very much. Board of Education. First up is Labor Relations, which is me. I can't remember when the last time I did an update. We've done two meetings. One was with an overview from a couple of different school districts with regards to a system called Guard Sentinel, I think is what it was called, and it was around cybersecurity, and it was absolutely terrifying. The things that people can do to try to get into school systems and things like that. So a lot of information and knowledge there. I did, I wasn't able to get an electronic copy, but I did give a paper copy of that presentation to Teresa and Lou. Also, we recently did one with regards to updates to civil service law and, with regards to civil service law and some of the new things that are happening out there for employees from a hiring perspective and some of the ways they're trying to bolster some hiring for schools, things like that. So some interesting information there. Carolyn, are you going to do information exchange?
I attended the information exchange for the Monroe County School Board Association on November 8th, and it was all about ChatGPT and AI. And the title was, Whether We Like It or Not, Change Is Coming. So they talked all about how educators across the country are addressing the AI challenges in their classrooms, how they feel about it either positively or negatively. And it seemed very reminiscent of when we tackled that one-to-one technology piece many years ago, that people were pretty resistant to it at first. But once you dive in and start looking at the challenges and start working with it, that it will come and we will manage it as we did with the one-to-one technology. So that's my report.
Legislative.
It has been a busy month for Legislative, or busy since the last time I reported out. On the 28th, we were able to meet with Regent Adrian Haleigan. He's the regent from our, from the Rochester region. And he wanted to talk to us about the New York State Graduation Measures Blue Ribbon Commission, which had just given its report to the Board of Regents on recommendations for possible changes to graduation requirements in New York State. And it was a great session because there was a, Regent Hale wanted to learn as much from us as he wanted to report to us. So we're really grateful to be developing that relationship with him. And then on the 29th, the Legislative Committee met as a whole to prepare for our Day of Advocacy, which happened on Monday. That's yesterday, right? Today's Tuesday? Okay, that's yesterday. We did two sessions, one at 9:00 AM and one at 3:00 PM. The membership of the Legislative Committee worked together, working off of our position papers to develop questions for all of our local leaders. All of our elected leaders were invited. Many, many came. We were able to see Sarah Clark, Jen Lunsford, Summer Bruck, Holly, a number of folks who represent regions that are more rural than ours, and get various perspectives on what the upcoming budget season looks like. And this is our opportunity to tell them, these are the things that matter to us as you're developing the budget for the coming year. And it was a really fantastic session. And then today, we were able to meet in person with Demond Meeks, who represents the city of Rochester and then parts of Geets, Chaile, and Riga, to ask him, he wasn't able to attend yesterday, but we were able to sit down and, again, further that relationship with folks who represent our region to let them know how, how their legislation affects us in our day-to-day operations. So if you have the chance, two things. If you have the chance, I would look up the Blue Ribbon Commission's Graduation Measures Report. You can find that both on the MCSBA website. If you're a board member and a public, you can look that up on the Board of Regents website. You can find that on Google. And then also, if there is another Day of Advocacy, I truly recommend that you try to attend because it's, it's just great to hear from the legislators themselves what they know and what they think. We did a lot of education on how the tax cap really does affect our ability to meet mandates in New York State. Thanks.
All of us are working on a bunch of things, but it feels like of late, Karen, you've had a ton of time, in part because of the leadership position you've taken on with Legislative, so thank you very much for that and being such a strong advocate for our community. A quick update, as I say each time, we are very fortunate that our past president, Mark Lakonovich, is one of our representatives on the BOSI Board, BOSI's Board now, sent along a quick update from their November and December meetings. They had updates and discussions with regards, with regards to the anti-racist curriculum project. They're leasing some new space for their central office functions in order to create some additional instructional space. They're continuing to grow out there. And they had a bunch of updates with regards to Quarterly Steering Committee and their 2023, speaking of Karen and the Legislative Updates, their 2023, 2024 legislative priorities from a BOSI's perspective as well. So we greatly appreciate Mark's work on behalf of this community. Other board member reports. Christina, I'll start with you this time and we'll move down the table that way.
For, I actually think that two of my meetings happened the same day as the board meeting last week, or last month, so I, the, I just want to say thank you because many of us sit on many different committees and sometimes we, when we report, we've been to a slew of meetings. So this is my, this is my month in which I've been to several. So in our Audit Committee, which Karen and Larry and I sit on, we were able to go over the corrective action plan from the Comp Trollers Audit. We always review our internal audit and we often discuss different approvals of contracts that we're thinking about for the district and also capital projects. So that happened at the last audit meeting. I also attended the Social Studies Program Evaluation Meeting. For the first meeting, we dived into state standards and we're going to start thinking about questions to tackle through the evaluation, and that'll go through the summer of 2024. The Teachers Policy Board met, and the policy board looks at grant approvals for professional development. We also talked about what kind of data we're going to look at in terms of improving instruction in the district. And then I also sit on the New York State School Board Association's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And in the last November meeting, we talked about how to diversify our board members, what NISBA can do to draw in new board members around the state, what kind of training they can provide. And we heard from several boards and how they have diversified their boards and also in terms of what kind of education the state NISBA can provide. So that's it for me.
The one thing I did attend as a board member over the past month was a PTSA meeting with the combined principals of TCMS and Brighton High School, with Ms. Edmonds and Dr. Hall, who spearheaded the meeting, calling together parents to have an informational session about vaping in our schools, starting in middle school and then maybe progressing into high school. And I joined as a volunteer board member, but in my capacity as a pediatrician who does work in this area, I was able to share some expertise and resources along with another wonderful resource we have in our schools, Lance Mitchell, who's a social worker and addiction counselor, who shared, instead of facing punitive consequences for students who are struggling with vaping or vape devices, we're finding ways to address it more restoratively and providing parents information about sort of the dangers of vaping, what's out there, how students are getting them, and then what they can do, how to have conversations, and then where to send their students. So again, avoiding punishment and really just getting students help who want help. So thank you to both principals for taking that on. And again, Lance Mitchell, it was wonderful to interact with him as well, and I think it was really well received.
I have nothing further to report, but if you would like information about the Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures, you can find it as a featured story at NYSED.gov. Thanks.
I just want to point out, in that same space, there's an opportunity to comment on those, and there will be additional opportunities. They likely won't wrap those up until probably mid-next year or so. Right, exactly. So there will be a comment period, but there's opportunity right now, I believe, also to comment, and any feedback we can pass along as well. So thanks for bringing that up.
I was unable to attend the Curriculum Council meeting as well as the Hiring Practices Committee meeting this time. I was, had a previous engagement. And our school-based equity team for the high school, our meeting has been rescheduled. So nothing to report at this time.
I have nothing additional to report, as other committees have already reported on it. So fast enough to carry on.
I also was unable to attend the Curriculum Council. Sorry, Dr. Rio. And I have nothing else to report.
I'll quickly note two things. One, actually it won't. On the construction side, our normal bi-weekly OACM meetings, but we got a great construction update, so nothing, nothing necessary to add there. Esther and I tag teamed sort of the Hiring Practices Committee, which is chaired by our own Lou Alimo. And I was able to attend the November meeting where we continued to look at the hiring rubric and did a couple of other group exercises around continually trying to figure out how we get better with our hiring practices. So that was that. Now I'm just being really careful about the agenda, so I do this correctly. BTA, I'm sorry. Anybody else have any other reports? BTA. Nicole.
Great, thank you. So hopefully you enjoyed looking at our whole list of pictures, starting from Council Rock, where you see some, I think those are first graders, working on fall fun gym, learning ways to jump land, balance during their, AKA Halloween gym, fall fun gym. They also worked on a fitness unit with Matt Griffin, who's a U of R Athletic Performance Specialist, who also helps run the fitness center here at the high school. They learned about exercises to strengthen muscles, good posture, and using proper form. So you can see some amazing squats and lunges. They also learned some bird dogs and dead bugs. So pretty fun stuff happening in the Council Rock gym. At FRES, 4th grade ESS students were making autobiographical maps, and students could either choose to make a visual poster or use technology and make PowerPoint or Canva presentations. So you can see a few examples of that. Also, at French Road, 3rd and 5th grade phys ed classes had a guest speaker who came in to teach karate skills, focusing on respect, coordination, and there was a lot of striking and blocking. That was definitely the favorite part, the striking. At TCMS, English 8 students, thanks to the Brighton Education Fund, were able to take a field trip to the Memorial Art Gallery. They're now writing a poem about resilience based on a piece of art that they selected. Also, at 12 Corners, for SEL Wednesday, the entire school participated in a group activity to create gratitude chains. So all the win classes made their own chain, and then all of the chains were linked together and hung in the foyer of the school to celebrate gratitude-building wine. There are two clubs that are brand new, the Doodle and Draw Club and the Games Club. Lots of fun happening. At the high school, you can see an amazing list of the senior high area all-state participants, which was at Potavia High School in November. And then there were five students who were chosen to perform at the NISBA Conference All-State Ensembles. AP Lit students have been looking at the dangers of performative rather than genuine allyship, and they were reading a novel by, a Duchesque's novel called Americana, and creating graphic essays based on that. And there were just some amazing examples of what the students have created. So you can see a few of those. Students in Sarah Jezu's Portfolio Preparation class are working on using 2D and 3D mediums based on student choice, and again, wonderful photographs of students really engaged in their learning. In early November, Mrs. Hernandez and Mrs. Baker's Spanish 4, 4H class took a field trip to La Casa Hispana at Nazareth College. They participated in an immersion program and then shared their experience with the VHS community by creating a display as part of the Holiday and Traditions Unit. And then, last but not least, Dana and Ori came from Shonchanim and talked about the differences between Israeli and Brighton teenagers. They visited Heather Bonadonna's multicultural lit classes and nonfiction classes, and students were really engaged and felt it was a really interactive and informative presentation. Thank you, as always, for letting us share some of the great things teachers and students are doing.
Thank you and the entire BTA for getting all those. I know that you don't have to work real hard. A lot of people are sending you pictures. You send them reminders, but I would just say unequivocally, you always have the best pictures. So many students concentrate on so many things, or laughing and smiling, which are about the best pictures we can ever see based on what we do. Dr. Victoria Love is not able to be here tonight, but Christina, I think you were going to cover just a couple of quick things.
Yeah, hello. I thought that I would just thank the PTSA for all the events that they do for our district and for our teachers and our students and families. It helps build community here in the district. So I just wanted to point out, they've helped plan fall activity nights at the middle school. I'm just looking at Victoria's report. They did some service activities at French Road, collecting coats. The book fairs have been, I have heard, successful. They're providing some holiday cookies at the end of this month and organizing school pictures, author visits, movie nights at Council Rock. So a big thank you to the PTSA and all the volunteers.
Thank you. Dr. McGowan.
Few items, very briefly. First of all, I think it's really important to point out, we are in the midst of Hanukkah, and I would like to wish our many community members who are celebrating a very happy Hanukkah. Interestingly, as I was thinking about our message to staff around the holiday season, in the midst of Hanukkah season, often referred to, or holiday referred to as the Festival of Lights, and the recognition of resilience and perseverance, a poignant moment in Jewish life, we're in a poignant moment ourselves, I think, in the world. And I am so grateful to our staff for being a source of that light and hope for the kids in our school community. So I wish to thank them and wish everybody very happy holidays. Celebrating or not, I hope people have a wonderful time with their family and friends. We're knee-deep in budget season. As we come back after the first of the year, we'll be much more detailed in that conversation with all of you and with presentations as well. And I want to again thank Karen for legislative advocacy and the work around, just thinking about what it will look like long-term for us in terms of funding and in this coming year. We have the February referendum, of course, detailed quite a bit this evening, and you'll have a couple of votes, roll call votes, in a few minutes regarding those. But I do want to again reiterate with the community, three things. One, on, on January 9th, will be more detailed presentations at the board meeting. On January 31st, will be an opportunity for the community to come in and see the boards with drawings, layout, et cetera, ask any questions that they have. And there'll be a brief presentation that evening, 7:00 PM, in the boardroom as well for that. So we're excited about that. And, and I'm not sure if I was clear enough before. I know Lou was very clear that the portion of our budget devoted to capital and the taxes raised for that will not go up. All kidding aside, we talked for a long time, and it's a tribute to the people who are sitting at this table right now and those that came before you, and, and really lose financial stewardship, about getting the car payment in the budget, right? So the notion of having a debt service amount in the budget that could support ongoing capital work without having to be increased in the future. Not necessarily the amount spent, but the taxes needed to support that. In other words, when we're done paying off something, or we have more money in the capital reserve to pay the down payment, without increasing the cost to taxpayer, we're able to continue to go out and, and do more projects. So going back now several years ago, when we were first having that conversation, and our need to set that structure up financially, this is the benefit of that. It is also the benefit of the sale of Brookside and really the notion of that being a community asset that could be turned into something that would continue to benefit the community, but in different ways than the previous benefit. So again, Lou, thank you for leadership in that regard, and this great opportunity for us to do that without an additional cost to our community and additional tax to our community. And last but certainly not least, we'd like to welcome a new member of the team tonight. He'll be appointed on the personnel agenda. Mr. Mark Cress is here. Mark is the new Director of Health Physical Education Athletic, coming to us from the Livonia Central School District. We're so excited. Mark has been a leader in the region, in his league, in the section, as an athletic director, and keenly interested in how he can continue to connect with youth programs in the area, build that connection, and really think about the experience that our kids are getting, not just on the field, on the court, but also in the gymnasium and in our health classrooms, and how those all connect to delivering a more healthy- and how those all connect to delivering a more healthy experience and preparation for all of our students, K through 12. Mark, can you come on up and shake some hands and put a hat on for us, please? It's only in athletics that people put a new hat on. Yeah, that's true. That's true. Here we go. Welcome aboard, Mark.
Welcome. As was alluded to just a minute ago, we're going to go through two approvals, and a roll call is needed on each of these approvals. So Kim will be reading the roll call, and you give the response as "aye", which is for, or nay, which is against, but whatever. Yeah, convinced. Do I need to read it? Kim, do I put it forward and then you go? Okay. So first up is approval of the Seeker Resolution adopting negative declaration for the Phase 2023-2024 Capital Improvement Project. I'm sorry, motion to approve. Moved by Eleanor. Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Larry Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina Lee. Karen Hatch. Dr. Gasparino. Esther Winter. Eleanor Oi. Carrie Limbertino. Motion is carried, 7-0.
Next up is a resolution to authorize capital project vote on February 7th, 2024. We've been through that. We saw a presentation on, I know that you're all caught up on that. Motion to approve. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Sue.
Larry Davis.
Aye.
Christina Lee. Dr. Gasparino. Carrie Limbertino. Karen Hatch. Eleanor Oi. Esther Winter. Thank you. Motion's carried, 7-0.
We'll reiterate the dates, and these will be on the website, of course, also, that we will be doing a meeting presentation with the financial folks on January 9th, and that the community forum is on January 31st. Again, we'll have communications going out in regards to those. Next up, approval of the revised corrective action plan for the comptroller audit of IT asset management. Audit committee, through myself and Christina and Karen, discussed this briefly. Any questions with regard to this corrective action audit? Motion to approve. Moved by Susan. Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Next up, we have the approval of the second read policies. This is the one, Policy 8260, Instruction Title I, Parent and Family Engagement. We have had a chance to review that and talk about it in the past. Are there any additional questions? Motion to approve Policy, second read of Policy 8260, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement. Moved by Carrie Lynn. Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? The straight line is really a challenge. I just want that to know. Next up is the approval of the settlement agreement, memorandum of agreement, between the Brighton Central School District and the Brighton Association of Office Professionals. You've had a chance to read that agreement and memorandum. Any questions with regards to that? Motion to approve. Moved by Esther. Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Approval of professional service agreement for pre-refendum architectural services. You've had a chance to review that as well, and Lou, that's SEI, who we work with. Any questions in regards to this proposal? Motion to approve. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? Bids. Approval of three bids, and I'll read each one. Approval of cooperative bid evaluation for electricity supply. Approval of cooperative bid evaluation for school lunch paper and plastic supplies. And then finally, approval of cooperative bid evaluation for food services, equipment repair, maintenance, and installation service. Any question in regard to these bids? Motion to approve. Moved by Eleanor. Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Next up for the consent agenda. We've got approval of personnel changes, which you've had a chance to review. Approval of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education and approval of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. Any question in regard to any of these items on the consent agenda? Motion to approve. Moved by Susan. Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? We got kids, we got kids going on field trips, which is always exciting. BHS Spain trip, February 16th through 26th. Varsity baseball spring trip to Orlando, Florida, March 29th to April 4th. The Model UN, which is January 5th through 6th, excuse me. We've got a few different fundraising activities that you saw, which includes girls' basketball at Jersey Mike's. Great opportunity to eat. Questions in regards to the field trip and fundraising activity approvals? Motion to approve. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? As is our custom, we will read on the gifts. We have a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $885. This is really cool. To cover the cost of theater tickets for the AP Literature Class trip to New York City to see two plays with contemporary interpretations of Shakespeare. The Brighton Education Fund continues to be just an awesome thing for our kids. And it's great to read something like that. Motion to approve. Moved by Esther. Seconded by Susan. All those in favor? Anything else for the good of the order? Two things. Christina wants a selfie with everybody, so everybody stay put. But we like to close with some gratitude. And I didn't, we obviously are a different place than we normally are. Each year, we get to get out to a school, each of the schools, and have a meeting. Our next meeting, in fact, in January, will be at Danielle's House over at 12 Corners, so that'll be cool. But grateful, and this always happens without fail. We get here, everything is set up, the microphones work, the screen works, everything works. And that happens because of people like Bill Moyer, Jack Whitmer, Mike Paxton, Violet Klaus, Carol Adamski, Anna Adamski. Everybody wave to us. If I said your name, wave to us. Thank you all. We appreciate Tracy Glazer's leadership for always getting this all done. And we look forward to showing up at the middle school on January 9th, and everything will be set up and everything will work. I'm not even afraid of jinxing it. That's how good you guys are. So thank you very much. And with that, anything else? I wish everybody a happy holiday, and I hope over the next few weeks you get to spend time with family and friends. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.